So that he can sign up. Should we sign him up, because he's always two minutes late? And he grunts because he didn't get to sign. We have a full house tonight. We want to hear what everybody has to say. You will not talk over me in this meeting tonight, because everybody will be heard. Now, if we start this meeting tonight, we're going to do the ro- call the meeting to order, and then since the first agenda item that is on here, you will have the chance to speak during the three minutes, or you will have the chance to speak before the agenda item. Now let's call our meeting to order. Mary Lou Graham Smith?
Here.
Ronnie Colbert?
Here.
Barbara Norris is not here. In case y'all don't know, her mother passed away over the weekend, and please send her prayers to her. Sharon Reed?
Here.
Diana Chun?
Here.
Mayor Walker is here. We have four present, therefore we are able to go forward with a special meeting. Now, if we will, we're going to say the Pledge of Allegiance. To the American flag, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The Texas Pledge.
Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the D. Texas, one state, under God, and one indivisible.
Ronnie, if you don't mind tonight, would you mind saying a prayer for?
Thank you, Laura. This opportunity to be here, afraid today, God, that you would lead us, that you would guide us, you would help us to have good attitudes, and be the same for you.
Amen. We have public comments. I love to see everybody here, signed up to speak. I love to hear what the community has to say. So, we are going to go in order. Missy, have you got your timer ready?
I do.
Three minutes begins. Eddie Mildred? We're going to let you go first. You can just stand up. If you think everybody can hear you, you can go to the side and speak.
My name is Mildred Martin. I'm responsible for sending out all those flyers today to, so people can read about this meeting happening tonight. I thank y'all very much for showing up. And as far as the things on the agenda, on the roads, my question to this council is, who's responsible for the roads? Is it the intercity local agreement for repairing the roads, or is it the city?
We're not allowed to answer.
Do you want me to answer, Paul? Okay, I'll answer. We have an interlocal-
I don't need an answer.
Okay. Well, we have an interlocal agreement. I'll answer if I want to, Mildred.
I didn't say-
And we have an, we have an interlocal agreement with a county. That's what we have. It was signed April 17, 2017.
By Larry McMillan.
Okay, and so my question is, if there's an intercity local agreement, then why are we paying from the city of Plum Grove to do road repairs and signs?
It only covers 50%.
We're responsible for their own signs in our city, Mildred. They don't provide our signs.
Okay, and the road repairs?
It's supposed to be 50/50. And at this point, they have not stepped forward with their 50%.
And the county doesn't do it? It's, is the city's fault to do it?
If the county does not under interlocal agreement, we'll take the steps necessary to see that they did. That's what this gentleman down here is for.
That is the city attorney.
Okay. Thank you.
Calvin Nelson?
I asked you today, in the Commissioner's Court, if you, I showed you the flyer, and you said that you was going to close some of the roads coming out.
I said the council was going to take the vote.
Right. And my concerns are not only for the people that live here, the people that do business here, but my main concern is for the children. The bus routes was established two weeks ago. All the buses come out and did their runs. And if y'all, as a council, vote tonight to close those roads and put those kids at danger on the roads that you're going to send them down, which are not, the road you're closing is better than the road you're going to put them on. And if anybody wants to disagree with that, I would like for them to do it at this time. Otherwise, I believe, as a city, it puts you at risk, because the first two buses that passes the Colbert down there, on Plum Grove Road, and one of their back tires falls off, and the bus turns over and kills about 10 kids, I believe that it's going to look very bad for our city, that we closed a good road to deter them down the road that is not even impassable by small cars and trucks. And, you know, I've lived here 20 years. I'm not an old timer, I don't guess, but I live here, my wife lives here, my kids live here.
In the city of Plum Grove?
Um, my mailbox is in the city of Plum Grove, which right beside Mr. Inlo's and Mr. Clay's. Uh, so, I don't know where y'all city li- y'all city lines changed before.
Where do they live?
Uh, 210 County Road 3470. It's right next door to Jake Clay, across the street from Danielle, and Mike is where my mailbox is.
Well, it's a simple answer, if you live in the city or not. Are you paying a tax to the city of Plum Grove?
I'm not, but my mailbox is.
It don't matter.
Okay, is there anything else your time is to avoid, Mr. Nelson?
I'm just very concerned about y'all closing roads for school buses, not to be able to get the kids to school.
Okay, well, I'll answer that question. Thank you. Thank you for coming and voicing your opinion. I spoke to the Cleveland ISD secretary today. She works for Chris Wood Superintendent. Her name is Susan R. I told her to do some things that have come up in the city, and for safety, after what we've experienced over the last couple of weeks, that it is too congested at the main road. The road that you're referring to is, was not approved, Mr. Nelson. This council turned it down and denied it. The developer built it anyway and opened it without the city's consent. You have to have the city's consent to open that road. Now, be that as it may, when you have 40 cars in the way of the road trying to turn into the new school road, the road that you're talking about, the private road, whatever road he wants to call it, I call it the illegal road.
First of all, Mr. Woods is not the superintendent.
I mean, he is the, he's the board director.
Mr. Trotter is the superintendent. Mr. Woods is on the board.
And so, they will be, they will be let, no, they are aware of the meeting tonight will be made, and we will give them the roads that are shut off, and they will talk to the bus barn. Now, what will happen, as has been happened in the past, is that we know the road is right there. Well, when you have 13 cars there, and what would you say the fleet of school buses is? 40, 50 school buses? Well, they're all going to line up, and they're going to transition, in that very dangerous transition out this road now, the intersection of the Y. And what's going to happen is they're going to back up.
So, we put another Colbert right beside it for another road, which makes a lot of sense.
Um, well, that's not, that's not here. We're discussing the roads that are being closed. So, we're going to have, what we will have is, we'll have the road come around, and you're going to have school buses exposed. What we're trying to do is cut down on the congestion in the north part of the city and move it to the south part of the city. But I have spoken, as far as what was sent out, and it's going to affect the emergency vehicles, that was our first person we spoke to, was our fire chief in our fire department. The gates will be breakaway gates that they agree with. Not every road is being closed. This is inaccurate. And as far as the school buses go, they will be made aware of it. They understand, we've approved $500 million in bonds for those children, half a billion dollars. And they understand that their safety is our first concern, and they will be happy to cooperate with us when we set the new roads. And so, next, we had Danielle Inlo.
Yeah, I'm going to hold off.
Okay. Yeah, y'all can fill in this area if you just please. Danielle, are you going to hold off until the agenda item?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to go back and check your name. Now, for some reason, you feel like I pass you over later, you say, "Mayor, my turn." Brianna Randall?
Yes, ma'am. So, like, what Calvin was saying with the, the school buses, that that's going to be a concern of, like, blocking? I know that Splendora has, like, an alternative now, where they let the buses go, and they block the roads for them to go, to get out. If we could do the same thing, like, maybe use the fire department or some of the police to help, like, the congestion go onto the road without blocking the road off? I'm just wondering if that would be a possibility, if we consider not blocking the road? I don't guess she understands, but it's okay.
I'm not going to say it will not, cannot happen in the future.
Yeah.
I'm not going to say it cannot happen in the future, but for the time being, the answer is no. Because you would have to find, somebody would have to pay those officers, and the fire department can't take time away from fighting fires and saving lives to direct traffic for Colony Ridge. They have full-time jobs also. But in the, in the event things come up and things work out, it's always a possibility. We always have a possibility. Is there anything else?
No.
Ms. Cindy Navarro?
It's me.
Do you need a translator?
I, I try English.
Okay, okay.
My name is Cindy Navarro. I got four children. Uh, I live in, for two year, this area, Camino Real, N 198 Road, Cleveland, Texas, It's very important for the light semaphore, this area, for I got accident, over accident, the people spending, I got the truck, like this, for I, very important the light, the semaphore, we, I don't know.
She's trying to get a light for, like, the fire department, because when the fire department comes out, she was saying, she says that something has to be done. It's too cluttered back there.
Yeah, it is very important, the Gaza Strip, the, yeah, I don't know.
She says that she understands. She says that she understands what you guys are trying to do to make the corrections, to fix the roads, which will help with some of the congestion that is holding up all the traffic, because if the roads are not fixed, it's always going to be clustered because all the traffic.
Oh, she's supporting us or against us?
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Ma. Yeah, so, yeah. Okay. I have one of the four children, and I live in the bush.
She has four kids, she under, she says, the roads. She says, "I'm more worried about the roads, because I'm more worried about the traffic going to be on the streets."
Yes, thank you.
Yes.
Is she done?
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Mr. Alan Barton?
Okay. My one thing is, how, by closing these roads off, are y'all going to be able for public safety and to repair roads? If you put all that traffic on these roads, on Plum Grove Road, how are you going to repair it? I do not see how you're going to be able to repair it by putting all the traffic, cutting them out of the subdivision, and putting them up and down this road.
Well, he has now, Alan, I mean, I'm not sure if I got this correct, but I was told-
There's still going to be five roads.
Am I correct on the picture that I got today, that Mr. Harris has said that no commercial, no commercial trucks will be on that road unless you have a permit for him, from him? Well, that's a city road, Alan, and we give those permits, not Colony Ridge.
That's a city road?
Yes, it is. It's in our city limits. It's an illegal road, because the city's-
Okay, well, there wasn't there a road there before?
No. It went to Mr. Dalton, but it went-
Now, y'all shake your head. Sharon Kay, there was a road there. There was a Colbert that went-
It was driveway there.
No. It was not the Spears driveway.
And then Mr. Dalton had a small road on it, Alan.
They had a timber easement road that went in there.
But, and that was mine, if it was one private family, Alan, but when it's 20,000 cars pulling out there on Plum Grove Road-
Okay, and another thing. If y'all, y'all had three years to fix these dead gum roads. If you had that road fixed right there, there would not be no backup between here and there. If that road was fixed, they could get on out of there. But the road is so dead gum rough, you cannot fix it. No. Well, y'all been three years.
We understand that. We have been fighting with Liberty County to do their 50/50, and until they can come up with the 50/50, we just started collecting sales tax, or just collecting taxes, period property taxes.
FEMA won't cover it.
FEMA's not going to fix that.
FEMA will not cover it.
The damage did not happen during Harvey. The damage happened May 7th in Imelda. I have satellite imagery to prove so. It is in, it is in the state of Florida.
No, Alan, we do have, Alan, we do have money from FEMA, but it's not in our account. It's in FEMA's account. And two of the things we can't fix is until, listen! Two of the things that we are trying to fix is we can't fix, because Colony Ridge's drainage is so horrible, that our engineer cannot even perform an H&amp;H desktop study, because he changes the drainage back there so often. So, after three years, Papa Al, we finally, the EPA, San Jacinto River Authority, along with our water attorneys, FEMA, Army Corps of Engineers-
Tedom.
And Tedom have all gotten in with the county to address these issues. The county finally gave us drawings for our H&amp;H.
Mayor, we need to stick with that.
Okay.
One other question. What caused all of this to come up?
The school, the traffic, it came-
No, Leanne, do not sit there and laugh.
I was almost in a major accident there Saturday.
Okay, but has nothing to do with-
I was the problem.
Mentioned on Colbert.
That's every day. Okay, enough.
And I'll answer that, Alan. What thought it to come up is, we've had three weekends of traffic backed up all the way to Mary and Brian's house on a Saturday morning, and you couldn't get out. It took 45 minutes because of that new road. And the other reason, Alan, is that gentleman that's pulling that dirt out, he had, he's in the city limits of Plum Grove, and he got permits to pull out there and come out there on his road. He tried to work with them, and they turned him down. Competition, I guess. I don't know. But we can't, he has every right. He got permission from the city to come out on that road. The dump truck driver did, in his city. That road from Trey's was turned down in August and said, "No." He built it anyway illegally. He opened that road. There was no service of road, Alan, around to those roads. There was no road that went to those communities back there. That's a new road to those communities. They were using the road in front of my house.
And you get it, the roads passed that go to the community back there, they are not, got nothing to do with the city of Plum Grove.
They're entrances into our city, dude.
They do not, they were not in the city limits of Plum Grove, are they?
Which ones?
The one that's on the backside of there.
No, those are not being closed, Alan.
There's still five roads open.
We're not closing all the roads.
I'm not saying they're closing them, but that road that comes out, that's not go- is not part of the city.
Which road?
Which?
At the corner, at where the cul-de-sac is, on the road, on the very first road.
No, that's not in the city, but once you get to Donald Inlo's property on up, that's in the city.
Okay, if you look from right there, where that cul-de-sac is, you'll see a dirt road that goes up through there. That dirt road come from right there, Plum Grove Road, right, where Trey put the concrete road in, go straight up there to that dirt road.
Were we any of us using it prior to when he paved the road?
No, but it sure have a lot of them using it from coming in front of your house, whenever they open it up.
It doesn't matter if there was a private road there before or not, once it attached to our roads and they opened it up, it became illegal.
Okay.
They did not get the permits or the right, the abilities to be able to open that road.
Y'all need to research it.
We did.
We did. That's what he does, LeBron, he's an attorney. But, again, Alan, you're three minutes. If you've got anything else, okay. Thank you for coming, Alan, and saying your part. Kayla Nelson?
So, my name's Kayla Nelson. I've lived here since I was six years old, and mine also is on the road. So, if you're saying that that is a private road, correct? The road in question?
It has a sign up.
It's a private road within the city limits.
Okay, right. So, if those people have permission to drive on it, why is it an issue?
Because he was not given permission to build the road in the first place and access Plum Grove Road, our city road. It was denied by this council in August of 2019. He built it anyway illegally and connected illegally.
Okay, so if it was not illegally connected, it would be fine?
If he comes back here and got the right permission, but he hasn't done that. It was denied, and he opened it on December 24th of 2019, over a holiday weekend, when all attorneys would be gone, and he opened it without our permission. There were barriers, and those barriers could stay there forever, and everybody would have used it. But he did not have the permission of this council to open it.
Okay, I don't want to spend all my time arguing with you, so I want to be on to my next point. My next point is, I under, like you said earlier, I understand that the city has to buy signs and supposedly rocks to barricade things, and I know that that does not cost a lot of money in the grand scheme of things, but to fix the road. But I, maybe it's just me being young and ignorant, but I would think that if we saved our money to go towards the roads, instead of spending things on, like, barricades for the church loop, which were unnecessary, dirt to, once again, barricade the church loop, which was also unnecessary, um, signs everywhere.
But until the drainage is fixed, and until the traffic is fixed, what little bit they do to repair our already bad road, it's not going to hold up. The first water and first drainage out there-
Yeah, because when they're done, it goes away. And then my last point is, today, this afternoon, probably two hours before this meeting, I understand that y'all are voting on whether to close the roads on this meeting. The council will be voting, correct?
Yeah, that's when you learned about it?
No, ma'am, I knew about it days before, but I'm saying, Craig, you're voting on it tonight.
Yes.
Okay, um, so it has not been okayed or turned down, but then why are people out there surveying to already close down the road, when the meeting has not happened, and it's not your-
That's not our people. We don't have anybody surveying anything.
Donald Inlo doesn't help work for y'all and put dirt on the road?
No, they was measuring the depth on the Colbert, where they-
They were measuring the depth on the Colbert?
He's patient for his buildings that he's putting out.
But-
That's private property.
It is private property. It belongs to Trey Harris.
It's not ours, but, no, it belongs to Donald, but we're not- And are you a representative of Trey Harris?
No, ma'am, I represent myself.
Okay, well, I mean, you're speaking for him, so I just wanted to ask.
Well, if I, now, I don't agree with everything he does, and I don't agree with everything you do, but in this situation, I would agree with him about the road and not you.
Okay, well, I wish you'd have been at the meeting in August of 2019, because that decision's already been made. He put his road in illegally, and now it is being addressed because of the traffic and congestion that's made. Is there anything else? What is your time?
She's done.
You're done. Thank you for coming. Tatiana Albider?
She says she's not going to talk.
You don't want to speak? Why? Don't be afraid. And so, you want to get up here and say your words, you're better off, you'll be. Okay.
She's like, no.
Are you sure? Do you want to save it in case later? Okay. Donald Inlo? Okay. Mira Acevito?
Yes, ma'am. Okay. First of all, we wouldn't be having these problems with the illegal road or the regular road if we would've did a traffic study and environmental study on a Phase 1, to know what we're going into in the population. So, let's stick to the facts here, people. Everybody's taking sides here. It's what's right. Who's being affected by this is Plum Grove's roads, the community. Also, who's being affected by this is the people in the colonies. Everybody's sitting here, worried about whose dealings are getting hurt, taking sides, because either they work for the developer, or they don't like the developer. I really don't care. This is impersonal. This is business. The roads are damaged. The fire department had to rescue kids off of buses, whether if it's on either of those roads, they're all no good. Why? An environmental study was not done, and a traffic count wasn't done the way it should have been done.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
And where was everybody when we've been trying to fight this for the past three years? We've been fighting for three years, and nobody showed up for any meetings.
Everybody's affected by it.
Nobody showed up. We have been fighting for three years, and nobody showed up. Now you're showing up.
You're not alone anymore. That's what you do.
That's right.
You're not alone anymore.
Thank you.
First, we didn't know all of our rights. Second, there is a lot of people back there. There is a lot of people back there that they don't speak the language.
Are you on, are you on the agenda? Little Brian, when you become mayor, you can run these meetings, and if you can't keep your mouth shut, I'll ask an officer to send you out of here.
Amen.
Thank God.
Ma'am, are you signed up?
I'm not, ma'am, I'm sorry. I even have to sign up.
Okay, okay.
But I'll do it next time, don't worry.
Yes. I'll tell you so for Facebook.
Any of you want another item put on the agenda, contact the city secretary.
I'll get your number before I leave.
Okay.
And we will be glad to put it back on there, and people can show up.
You can call anybody on this-
We need people to help us back.
To put it on the agenda. They can all ask that it be put on the agenda for you.
I'm going to run for mayor, too, next time.
You come a little too here.
Yep, I'm going to come.
Mr. Pierce, can I, I saw you back there, and now I don't see Mike Pierce. Where are you at, Mike? Hi, Mike, your turn.
Oh, I can't hear.
Good to see you back in here, Mike.
One thing we need to do, y'all need to invest in a speaker system, so everybody can hear.
Yeah.
This is ridiculous. I'm sitting there watching all the mouths, and I don't have, you know, clue what most of it's being said. And what I was going to speak about is not on the agenda. I heard something about the water well. That's what I-
That'll be addressed at the next meeting.
Oh, yeah, on the regular meeting.
Okay. At the next regular meeting. And if, I'll tell Missy to go ahead for next meeting, and you would want it, it will be addressed.
Take into a speaker system.
I'll translate.
Anybody speaking? Everybody here, y'all?
Are you saying I have a quiet voice, Mr. Pierce?
This young lady right here did the best.
Thank you.
That's Mr. Pierce. He's been on council, you need to get to know him, too. Charlie Inlo?
They can.
Is there anything you would like to say, for, against?
Thank God for today.
Thank you.
Amen.
James Champion?
I'm going to wait.
You're going to wait till the next, to the deal? Okay. We got Donald, Danielle, and Mr. Champion that are waiting. Okay. Calvin Paget?
I've lived here for 20 years. A nice little town. I don't know any of y'all up there. I don't know Mr. Trey. But I'm telling you right now, if you had an agreement three years ago with the county, why aren't the roads done? Number two, if you didn't approve the road to be opened, why is it built? How long it taken to build it? I'm in construction, I can tell you it took him about six months. During that time, if you didn't approve of the road, why did it continue?
Because, sir, we were, we had no taxing here, and we operated off a very small budget, and Colony Ridge bullied us, knowing we didn't have the money to buy them an attorney. So, when I get asked, where does your tax money go? It goes to protect your city with attorneys like this and this, and now the attorneys are working on it.
Okay, well, I-
Yeah, we had to put the funding in place.
I paid city taxes this year. I expect the roads to be fixed. Are you going to fix the roads?
No, sir, but I'm going to do what I can to make sure they are.
You're spending your money on this attorney's not fixing the roads.
Liberty County's not fixing the roads either. They're not doing their half.
Okay, but you said a while ago that if Liberty County didn't fix the roads, that y'all were going to-
We try. We only get half. We only have half.
They won't give us half.
Okay, they fix half the roads.
We have patched.
Don't fix, don't fix this road that way.
If they don't fix the drainage, it's not going to work. Anything ain't going to work.
I disagree. I've worked here for 20 years.
I've lived here for 71.
Okay.
It's the way they are?
No, I do not agree with the way they are.
What are you doing about it?
There's nothing we can do about it. She's showing up at county meetings and fighting all the time.
We are fighting every day.
I go to county commissioner court. And it, and it don't do a bit of good.
I pay taxes.
Why they do?
Instead of spending money on a lawyer, I get it that you need a lawyer for certain things. But I think the money, the roads should take priority.
Well, Liberty County should take priority.
If you only have half the money to fix the roads, fix half the roads.
Sir, I've got a question. I've got a question for you.
Okay.
Okay, you're asking us as, as a city, no, this is not your time. You're asking us as a city, why do we don't fix the roads?
Yes.
Okay, you've paid taxes one year for the city. How many years have you paid taxes to Liberty County?
For twenty...
Why haven't you been there to commissioner's court to...
Can I answer that?
Sure.
Before y'all got in office, the county took care of the roads. When, when the commissioner before me, before he left, he repaved that whole road. Whoever it was.
No, okay, I'll tell you what, sir. Because in the year twenty fifteen, when Jay Knight became judge and you got new commissioners over there and Eddie Lowry replaced Boo Reeves, they changed their code and they said no more going out there and fixing Plum Grove's roads unless they can pay their half.
That's not what I heard.
Well, sir, I'm telling you the truth and I've got the minutes for all the meetings.
And I'm meaning that you told the city, do not do anything else to my roads and stay out of my city because they approved our roads.
Sir, that is not true.
Time is up. We have sent out paperwork and we've had paperwork here proving that that is a false statement and we've handed it out at several different meetings when this has hit the agenda.
And if you'd like to copy my twenty emails and all the meetings I've attended, you are more than welcome to them.
Well, I haven't been up speaking as to why we're closing the roads. Why are we closing the roads? The road that you're speaking of, it is a better road and it helps the traffic flow. So are we gonna just shut that down and say, what the hell?
Well, they're, they're certainly gonna vote on that tonight, sir.
Does, does the people get a vote?
Mayor. No sir. Does council vote?
In no way. Mayor.
Yes.
Well, we're not running the...
It's not so much a public debate. You can comment on what they say, answer some questions, but we need to stay away from debates.
And Laura Brendan, Laura Brendan, am I saying that correctly? R-E-N-B-O-N?
Redeno, Laura Redeno?
I can't hear her. She's been in the very back.
Laura, I might could hear.
Habla?
You're saying you're leading for Liberty County, so why? I mean, I'm sure that there are plenty of people within our community, our own people that would gladly help out with that if you could communicate better and y'all had translators because y'all are posting on this just in English and it's not in a spread outfit. People are not aware. If y'all post at the bell box, if y'all post signs, if y'all let people know. I'm sure, I've spoken to lots of people that work in some of that, that work in other stuff, that would gladly help and donate. But y'all aren't spreading the word. Why? I don't feel, I feel like y'all aren't putting an effort in spreading the word.
Ma'am, we spread the word on our Facebook page. We posted up here and it gets shown. And we go over there, we fight with them and they, we've been over there and they've approved our repairs. When they said they were gonna approve it, we were gonna fifty-fifty it. I've even offered, if we pay, if it's two hundred thousand dollars, then let the county write out some type of an agreement with us that we pay them back at thirty thousand dollars, thirty-three thousand a year. If it's a hundred thousand dollars, we'll pay them thirty-three thousand dollars a year over three years. They could approve that, ma'am. Now, they, you, your community pays the county ten million dollars a year. If the county just took ten percent of what your community paid, our roads would be perfect. Our roads were engineered in nineteen seventy-one on Paul Campbell Loop to serve as sixty roads. Not your communities, not thirty thousand homes to serve sixty people. We told the county in twenty fifteen, don't hook into our roads. You're gonna destroy them and you know we don't have the money to fix them. They told us we would go over that bridge when we got there. Now, we've been going over that bridge for three years. Now, my question to you is why don't you call your precinct commissioner, Boo Reeves, your county judge, Jay Knight, and your El Norte P O A took in over a million dollars last year. Why don't you, as a P O A, come sit with us and Cleveland I S D got plenty of money and say, El Norte, Plum Grove, the county and the school district and Colony Ridge, since they're the ones who profited off of all this to fix it? And if you, you sit down with me one-on-one and Miss Maria can be if there's any lost in translation and I will be happy to explain it to you one-on-one. Any of us up here will. And I will show you the history and the documentation of how we ended up here today.
I'll give her the, all the information, precinct commissioners and all that, so she can email them or call them.
And thank you for coming and please come back.
Okay, I'm used to this. I've recently seen a few things fairly popping up on Facebook. So I'm saying that there's not really...
We're all seeing those things.
Yep.
Julio Ramos?
No quieres hablar?
Okay, but I'm gonna keep it on in case you wanna say something later, okay? Jose Hernandez?
I'll wait. I'll wait.
You waiting too? Okay. Jessica Reyes? Am I saying that right?
R-E-Y-S. Yeah, Reyes, yeah.
Karleen Melgar? Karen Melgar? Carlin? Nina Leña? L-E-E-N-A?
Leña, Leña?
Oh, come here Maria, help me with that name, please.
Sabanita, Sa- Sañas?
I've been listening to everything you're saying, but I haven't known.
Oh, the name before that one was mine, Elena.
Elena, Elena. I'm so hard. I try so hard. Um, you both have your three minutes. Who would like to go first?
I, I think we both, we both came because, I mean, everything was kinda thrown out of context. We, we, it wasn't communicated correctly. We're sitting here thinking...
Whoever sent this, did it, did it to party you up and then not give you real information?
I start working at six o'clock. I leave here at like four-thirty.
You get work.
But I, I do have, I do, I mean, I'm with this gentleman here. I am concerned about, I have two teenagers that will be starting high school and they, we've been living here for the past three years and, you know, it's scary. Every year it gets worse. Every year that it floods, the buses, my daughter gets panic attacks. I have, um, I mean luckily I have now a five-year-old that will be going to the Cottonwood Elementary, but the high schoolers still have to travel, you know, some ways. Besides the fact that there's no lighting at the crossings, like where they have to get on the bus, the kids are always almost getting ran over. And I know that may not be on the agenda, but it, it all kinda fits in with the security and the safety of our children. You know, you don't even have half or even a quarter of the community here and, you know, I understand that...
The things that are inside y'all's community, that's different than our roads. That's on there. They should have the lighting up there.
That's our P O A. That's our P O A, just so you know, and I will give you that information.
So, tha- and that's what I think. We're so new to this. This is the first time I even attend one of these meetings. So yeah, definitely, just so we know, I mean, I, I think we would all as a community, you know, back you guys up if it was, you know, to, to, to fix those roads as a community.
There will still be five roads open.
Yes, there will still be five roads open. You'll still have the two roads down before the detour.
And three after.
And Hercules Drive. There will still be five ways out.
The main issue is that road that was built without any permission.
Yes.
Will, will there be any maps or anything given out or for us to know?
Yes ma'am.
I would hate to wake up at four AM and...
I got you.
But thank you guys.
Okay, yes, we would never cut off all your entrances. We would never take the emergency services or the school buses. We wouldn't do that. Um, both of you, you don't have anything else to say? Okay. Elena?
Elena, yes.
All right.
Luna, like moon.
Jacob Plaine?
Yo tengo terreno ahí. I feel like what was done to the subdivisions and done to Plum Grove is really unfair to all of us. You know, it's unfair to us in Plum Grove. It's unfair to everyone that has developed, you know, moved in the back because honestly, we could not handle the influx of people that have come into this city. So it's unfair to y'all that, that have paid a lot of money to move into the subdivisions and, and you're in the same position that we are. One thing that I, I do wanna, I think, hey, you're awesome up there, because we need to start working together as a possible. And, um, one thing I wanted to ask, Leanne, I know that we're responsible for fifty percent in the county, which we're getting absolutely nothing, just in case y'all wanna know, absolutely nothing from the county. So, uh, on, on that, is the developer responsible with the influx of people? Could he help out at all, like with our fifty percent, since he, he's making money off of...
Can we talk to you about that later?
Okay.
Yeah, we will. And, and Jacob, you will soon have, um, I don't think anybody's going against you in the election. And you will soon have access to all of the information and I have it lined out where it speaks for itself.
Yeah, I mean, just even like this morning, I, I almost hit a vehicle that was pulling off that new road.
Yep.
I mean, because they're not stopping. They're coming to stop sign.
They do not.
They do not stop.
They do not stop.
So I, I, I got friends taking new sixty-four thousand dollar truck and I was in a drop of clown oversight that didn't stop. They pulled on out. But, um, one thing that I did wanna suggest, uh, if the developer was to ever come back and work with y'all on that, I think that, and if it was done legally, open the road legally, that maybe there should've been a turning lane put in there and, and he sacrificed his land, lane, uh, the land to put in the turning lane or roundout. But I mean, maybe that's coming back and doing it legally.
And Jacob, we have given him, he has sent many of his representatives to give that presentation. We've asked for one thing over the last two years, if Colony Ridge would give us a written estimate on what they would like to repair and the county match it.
We've yet to get it.
We'll be happy to sit down at any time.
And send it through a contract to our attorneys because we've done verbal and it didn't work.
Yeah, we want our attorneys to work that out so the roads are built legally enough to cove. We, and I mean, no offense, but I don't want Boo Reeves and one of the Colony Ridge people saying, well, let's just throw this road down and the next time it's covered in water, it gets undermined easily. We want it to be done right.
But is that what you're needing?
That is what we're needing.
You're gonna come back and, and sit down and come up with a game plan?
To come up with a better game plan.
And we have asked for that many times.
And Ronnie wants to answer this.
Let me say something. I don't think anybody on this council is opposed or opposes to working with Trey Harris.
They don't.
You didn't sign up?
I, I will.
It's too late. You have to be here. The problem is, everything that Trey Harris told us that he would do, he has not done one of them. And we did it on a handshake deal, which is stupid.
And there's a development agreement that's involved.
Let me talk. Okay. I don't have a problem with Trey Harris. If Trey Harris will do what Trey Harris says he'll do. Trey Harris don't do what Trey Harris tells, says he does, well, he'll do. And let me just ask you this. By show of hands, the people that lives out there, does Trey Harris do, do what he tells you he's gonna do?
No.
No.
I'm sorry?
No.
No.
Nope.
We're talking to people that lives in his subdivision.
I live out there.
Does he do, does he do for you what he tells you he's gonna do?
Yes sir.
But he don't do it for everybody else?
So he doesn't...
I believe he doesn't.
There's a reason.
Hold on.
Wait, I can't talk.
I'm, no, I'm talking right now.
For three minutes.
And you've already talked. My, my point is Trey doesn't do what Trey says he's gonna do. Now, Trey wants to come to this council and he wants to come to an agreement and a contract, we're more than happy to do that. But Trey won't come in here and do that. Now, I, I'll be honest with you. I, I am so sick and tired of fighting. She said you have teenage daughters? I have kids. They drive that road right out there to go to school.
Me too.
And the road, the illegal road, y'all can shake your head, you can say, we didn't approve it. If he would've went about it the right way, we would've approved it. But he doesn't go about things the right way.
It doesn't meet engineer specs.
Plain and simple. If he wants to do things right, we can work with him, but he doesn't do things right. Sir?
What approval is needed?
Well, it's too late.
It needs to be engineer specs and it's not.
Army Corps, Army Corps of Engineers.
Sir, I, I'll give you a, for instance.
Who does the inspections?
We have people that do the inspections.
We have an inspection company that works for us.
The problem is...
I have an inspection one.
The problem is...
Did you come to the city and get any of your permits?
No.
We bought our permit before y'all started collecting money for permits.
Okay.
Well, then your grandfather did.
Then your grandfather...
Your grandfather did. So I mean, your point is northern boy. I mean, you have no dog in the hunt on that. Now you do. You build, now you gotta get a permit, but then you didn't have to. If Trey Harris wants to work with us, we'll work with Trey Harris, but it's gonna be on paper.
Yep.
It's gonna be our attorney and his attorney. And in the past, he hadn't done it. I'll give you for instance, he cut all the trees down. He wasn't supposed to cut the trees down. But Trey Harris does what Trey Harris wants to do.
Amen.
Prove it. He put a road in when he wasn't supposed to put a road in, but Trey Harris did.
Why do the inspections come into play?
We're not on inspections. That's not on this agenda. We're talking about what's... Sir, no. My point is this. No, it doesn't.
It don't?
No, because the roads are messed up because these roads are not built for all those people. And we don't, we, we're glad that those people are here.
Some of the people live there, what are you gonna do?
If...
The developer here...
Nobody can go to their house?
Trey said...
We're going on four roads, sir.
And, and I'll, and I'll tell you this.
The road you're closing is better than the other roads that they have to drive around to get around.
Where do you travel?
I travel right down that road.
Okay, that's why you want the road. But what about us if we travel the main road?
I don't travel down the new road.
Okay, so you traveled down Plum Grove. Okay, the point is this, you talk about...
Mister Colbert is talking right now.
You talk about the fifty percent, okay? Our interlocal agreement says we provide fifty percent, they provide fifty percent. It doesn't say we provide fifty percent of money or manpower, okay? We finally got on the agenda and they wanted to try to strong-arm us by saying we couldn't provide the manpower and the labor because they knew we couldn't come up with the money to do that.
Do you have a signed agreement?
Yes, sir.
We have a sign, sir.
We've always had a signed agreement.
No, no, our council did not sign the agreement. That's the misconception that these people have. Okay.
But the interlocal agreement's not on the agenda, but we can't discuss that. We need to stick to...
Well, wait a minute, if it's not signed, we're fighting about all this, why would we sign it?
It is signed, sir. It was signed by Boo Reeves, Larry McMillan, Judge Knight, Stephanie Denman and the county clerk. Huh?
Who from the city?
That was your council. That was your council. She's naming all.
He was the mayor at the time.
You've been living here for twenty years, sir. You should know. He was the mayor before her.
I've seen the need to be involved, but Jill, I'm telling you.
Okay. We're gonna go, we're gonna move on down the agenda. Now we're at number six. And I have three people, Danielle, um...
Around Paul Campbell Loop, around by the old city hall and everywhere else down on that end. Listen, Trey Harris is the cause of all of this. If you'll notice, I'm putting in a new road right beside the road that y'all drive down. I'm putting it in. I've talked to Trey Harris in the past about his road being two lanes coming in, my road being two lanes coming out. We talked about it before I ever started building the road. He said, yeah, it's gonna be a good idea. He got mad the other day. We have two driveways on that road. He got mad because the people that I sold the front land to was using it for their dump trucks to come in and out of.
That he had given permission to do.
He called me and said, you stop those effing dump trucks. I said, Trey, I don't, I don't own that land. I don't own it. I sold it to those other folks. Well, you're gonna stop it or I'm gonna pull up both of your cupboards. So he showed up. Next day, showed up, I'm gonna pull up your cupboard. And I said, look, man, don't do this. I said, we can work this thing out. His very words to me, if you, if your family and F Plum Grove, I do what I want, when I want. Now, this is a guy that y'all are talking about.
And it's on video.
On that road. I never said nothing ugly to the man. It's on video. Y'all can watch it on video. I never said nothing to him. I said, look, don't do this. It's gonna cause all kinds of problems. I, you wanna know why that road was open out there? You're looking at him right here. I went before this city council and I asked them, please open the road to take the pressure off Paul Campbell Loop. I said, let him run it. Let him run it. Because I'd already talked to him about putting the other road down beside it. But now he's doing all of this, causing all these problems, folks.
Now, we're gonna close the road? Why?
If y'all got, if y'all got a problem, y'all need to talk to him about it. They, they didn't vote to open the road to start with. It was just me going between them to ask them to. They never voted to open the road. They voted to close the road. Not even let him open the road.
Operating illegally since December twenty-fourth, nineteen...
Not even let him open the road, period.
What's wrong with the road?
Sir, we've answered that.
Your three minutes are up.
Your congestion from that road. Do you drive these roads all the time? Because I do.
I'm, wait a minute, my three minutes ain't up yet. My three minutes ain't up yet. Listen, nobody wants to close the road. Nobody wants to close the road. But how else are you gonna bring him to the table and make him negotiate with you? Anybody got any ideas? We've asked him.
That's not why we're doing it.
These people by closing that road.
I understand that, but we're not hurting him. He's hurting him.
How do we get your report?
We don't wanna close the road. He does. He's the one that just put a big sign out there today that said, private road. Did you see a sign?
Yes, I did.
He put that up today. I didn't put it up. He did. He put that sign up, folks.
Everybody, this is a temporary measure that we're putting into place.
If he don't want the road closed, he will come talk to the city or sit down with the city.
A year?
It's for no longer than a year, but we anticipate it being less. We anticipate it being less.
Whatever, whatever, that's up with him. It could happen tomorrow. It could happen tomorrow. He could come and say, well, let's help you fix the other roads. And we could get it all done. It could happen.
Your three minutes is up.
Okay, sorry.
Thank you, Donald.
Danielle? Danielle, your turn. All right, you're not gonna speak. Okay, well then we're gonna carry on on this agenda. Okay, well then we're gonna carry on on this agenda. Now, is anybody on this that I didn't let speak? Anybody? Okay, don't go back and put that on there.
Can I translate that in Spanish?
Ma'am?
Do you mind if I translate that last phrase in Spanish?
What last phrase?
If there's anybody else on there that was not, it was.
Yes, go ahead, go ahead. They had to be signed up.
They had to be signed up.
Did anybody sign up that didn't get to speak? Yes, ma'am. Okay.
Okay, I got the question, but I need to translate it to somebody. I, I, I'm speaking very English.
Okay.
No, no.
We can't.
No, no, I'm not on the list. That's, that's, that's the reason. Entonces, para qué están llamando a una reunión? Si no, si no tenemos nosotros para, para, para poder hablar, no todos podemos firmar la, el papel.
Ellos llegan aquí antes de las siete y de. Ellos puede ponerlo en la agenda, ellos puede con la otra.
Yo me, yo me, no más, no más lo que yo quiero decir es todo. Más lo que quiere decir. El diseño que tienen en la calle no sirve para los tráfico que pasa.
He says the design you guys have here doesn't hold the volume, this traffic.
It never was supposed to.
Yeah.
En las otras calles que hicieron, la nueva hicieron. Tampoco sirve, sirve de nada.
He said even his new roads are no good. Don't let him do the roads.
Okay, and we're gonna go on. If anybody has anything to say, speak now or hold your peace. If you interrupt this time, if you interrupt this meeting from here on out, the officers are here. And I will do something I've never done before. I've never asked anybody to leave the meeting and I don't want to either. Danielle, do you wanna talk now?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, come on up here.
I just wanted to say, I have these cards with Trey's number in Torino Houston. So if they have a problem with anything that's going on, they can give them a call.
Okay.
Awesome. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And if y'all need my phone number, the city number's posted, y'all call Missy and I'll call y'all back quickly. Okay? I'm always available to y'all. I have another job, but as soon as I'm available, anybody at this table will speak to you one-on-one. We ask when we leave here, please don't come up to two of us at one time because we'd be breaking the open meetings act. Okay?
So, so anybody wanting to speak?
Nope.
You needed to be here on time and sign up to speak. Yeah, me too. Me too. So, no, he spoke to her. So, we're going forward. Number six. Consideration, discussion, and possible action for ordinance number zero eight dash seventeen dash twenty twenty. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Plum Grove, Texas. Establishing the temporary closure of the following street intersections located within the city limits of the city of Plum Grove, Texas. In order to ensure public safety and make improvements necessary to the general welfare of the public. One, A, Paul Campbell Loop. Two, a portion of the intersection of County Road five zero one seven, also known as Santa Rosa. And County Road three seven north, also known as Paul Campbell Loop. And a portion of the intersection of Plum Grove Road and County Road five thousand, also known as San Marcus. Containing. Fine, you tell, you wrote this. It's got all kinds of legal terms in it. Containing findings and provisions relating to the subject, providing for severalability, providing for repeal, providing for a penalty, and providing for an effective date. Now, council, I ask you all to look within your heart and I'm gonna say it again. Here's the map. We all know how bad the intersection is. Now, when that road backs up at three o'clock, Monday through Friday, there's gonna be thirty or forty buses. They're all gonna line up down this road. First eighteen wheeler that comes around, whether it's hauling logs, or bricks, or rock, or mobile home. Is gonna run right into those buses parked right out here. How many of you tried to make the transition and almost wrecked? Secondly, that road was installed without the permission of the city of Plum Grove and was absolutely told no by unanimous vote. And in Colony Ridge style, they did it anyway and opened it illegally. The road that she's discussing, the Montebello entrance, has had seventy-five wrecks on the road to Montebello in four years. Paul Campbell Loop's road, Santa Rosa, we cannot hold the traffic in front of the, on the Paul Campbell Loop coming across the orange branch. There's basically one rut, one way, and it's torn up. There is a road on Paul Campbell Loop that has a cul-de-sac.
Yes.
For people who live in the new communities. We're leaving that road open. The roads that will remain open will be the roads down at the detour. So when we have congestion and lots of traffic, you'll be in on that end of the city and you won't be affecting the road up here. And it is a temporary road closure. You'll still have two entrances in at the detour, two entrances out, exits out at the detour and entrances. And then you have a brand-new road out there called Hercules Drive, and Hercules goes to every road out there. The, all five of the roads we're leaving open service that whole community. The gates that will be installed are breakaway gates. And the event there's a fire, or your child, or you need the fire department, they have our permission to roll right through them. To go save lives and fight fires.
They have a key in every truck.
And they have a key to open them. You're not, but they're not gonna be shut down to the fire department. The schools were called today. I happen to be very good friends with Sue Bernard, the school secretary. We had a very civil conversation today. She's gonna talk to Chris Wood, the president of the board, and he is going to make sure that Superintendent Trotter knows. And he's gonna know and let the bus barn know, and the children will go through those entrances. You're still gonna be able to come out and come down Plum Grove Road. We're aware that there are two spots where there are runoff. Those are gonna be the first spots Mr. Enlow hits, fixing so two vehicles can come together. That road is no more dangerous than Paul Campbell Loop, or right there in Freddie Reeves. Now, is there anybody that wants to talk to me at this council about the road? Mary Lou?
No, I understand it totally.
Ronnie, you live across from it. Diana? Sharon?
Nope.
And I know how Barbara Martin Norris feels. So I'm gonna ask for a motion for number six. To approve ordinance. Now, Carl, do you want me to read the whole thing verbatim like I did?
Do I need to read it?
Or do you just wanna?
The whole ordinance?
Or you just wanna read approving of the ordinance number?
No, what you wrote on the agenda.
When do I legally have to do a motion?
You've already read it, so you just need to make a motion.
I make a motion that we accept it.
And I will second that motion.
The second came from Sharon Reed. Now, I'm gonna ask you, Ronnie Culberson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mary Lou, how do you vote?
Yes.
All opposed, there are no names.
Oh, we need to get real call from these two. Get their motion, the second is.
Get the motion in second, and you approve it.
Yep, yes.
The motion carries. Number seven, consideration, discussion, and possible actions to purchase signage for the road closures and detours.
I'll make a motion that.
Well, let's talk about what we're gonna do in some of the roads.
Well, well, we need, you know what signs we're gonna.
We just need to have road closure signs.
Yeah.
We just need to have detour signs, pretty plain. Me and Donald will.
And we will do the signs in English and Spanish.
Yes.
And we will try to get signs that people can't steal. We'll try to do something.
We're gonna have cameras on the road closure.
And there will be cameras on the road closures.
After this weekend, we have to.
And so they will know.
Do your gavel, get control.
And we will go, um, there will be security cameras on the gates. We've already had someone illegally tear up one of our gates in the cities. Twice, and we will be handling that and the legal procedures as the week comes. To make an example of if you tear up city property, you will be prosecuted. So, can I get a motion for signage? And there shouldn't be that many, right, Missy?
I'll make a motion that, uh, we get, urge a signage for road closures and detours.
Can I get a second? Okay, we're gonna go with Mary Lou seconding it. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Number eight, consideration and discussion and possible action to pay for labor of installation, installation of said signs and barriers. Said signs and barriers being what we discussed in the one before at number seven.
Yep. Just need a motion.
I make a motion that we pay for the labor to have the installations of the signs and barriers.
And I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. Ten, consideration, discussion, and possible action to purchase log boulders to secure the perimeter of city hall and the fire station. We're doing that here on the perimeter of the fire station when you come around the corner. And here to protect the firefighters. We've had people going through.
When they, when they have a wreck here at the triangle and they're blocking it off with their two biggest fire trucks, there's still people going around. We've had a firefighter hit.
So we, we're just, those boulders are the property. And, um, to my knowledge, I think the fire department, because people, the construction crews and the mobile homes that have been going through our city. One, are not getting permits, and two, they're cutting across the fire department's private property. And they're destroying their property. So I do believe that the fire department's gonna take the next necessary steps to put up boulders around their property.
Just need a motion.
I just need a motion. Ronnie made the motion.
And I'll second.
Mary Lou second. All in favor?
Aye.
Well, then I'll come back to it. All opposed? Motion carries. Number nine, construction, I mean, consideration, discussion, and possible action to purchase ten loads of gravel and dirt to perform road repairs and labor within the city limits. That's to make the road that y'all are gonna be driving on not as bumpy and not as many potholes. And however long it lasts with all the dirt trucks and commercial trucks running up and down it.
Would that just be a one-time payment or would it be a constant fix?
As it goes. Okay, I mean, we've done a couple of them already. It'll be as we go. Okay. Yes, 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 ma'am.
And I make a motion that we, uh, purchase ten loads of gravel and dirt.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. Ten, consideration, discussion, and possible action. I already done that one. Eleven, consideration and discussion, possible action to accept bids to place ten road signs in the city limits. Now, I was under the impression.
That was a bid from the other ones because we still need signs on three forty-three that say no three trucks. And there's no speed limit sign over there, and there needs to be signs to put on this stop sign saying no left turn. There needs to be a sign put down here that says no left turn. Because y'all are sitting at the stop sign headed towards Splendor and the eighteen-whealers are coming from Cleveland and turning on top of you.
Right, we're gonna direct traffic. I got you. So, um.
Micah put the bid in.
Micah put the bid in?
He's the only one that put a bid in. I put it on Facebook. Nobody else did.
Micah, you put the bid in?
Micah.
Michael. That's you. That's what I'm talking about. Thank you for all of that.
You just gotta stick to the fact that you're gonna be placing.
And you're gonna be placing the signs.
No, 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 I'm saying, we gotta stick to the fact that all this item is about is just whether or not y'all wanna go out for bids.
No, we did go out for bid.
And he got it.
He got it.
To accept it.
Yeah, he's accepted. We accepted his bid. I just got it on last agenda.
Can I get a motion to accept it?
I'll make a motion that we accept the bid.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Shaw K's holding up her hand now and she signed up to speak. So Shaw K, she.
I don't understand this. When you pull up to the stop sign out here, you're not gonna be able to turn?
Well, it, when the eighteen-whealers come through with Trailer House and they're turning left and a car coming from Splendor runs underneath them, we need something to.
Like a turning lane or what?
No, we need them to know they can't turn left from the stop sign to go to Splendor. They're getting caught up. We've had whole trailer houses. You've seen them.
Maybe I don't understand.
You've seen the whole trailer house fall off of them.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Day after day after day. But what I don't understand. When we pull up to the stop sign out here, or when, if you wanna go to Splendor, you're not gonna be able to?
Well, you live there.
And, and that's what I'm, explain that a little better.
Well, Shaw K, we were referring, you're going to Splendor, you go down to the turning road and go straight.
So the stuff they're about to fix right now, it doesn't have a lot.
Instead of coming this way and turning back in front of the traffic.
Can you leave your house? You go out with the country road and take another ride, come out there. They don't want you coming out of your house and turning back this way because eighteen-whealers are doing it.
That would be illegal.
Explain that again.
Don't turn left.
Shaw K, there's gonna, because of the way the traffic and the, and the danger right here, and the fire trucks. When you come up to this main road, there'll be no more turning here.
Left, to go to Splendor.
Right here, you'll go out to the main road. And then if you're going straight, you go to the stop sign. But there'll also be, there'll also be no right turns onto, when you go around the curve, they're not gonna be able to turn right on that, left on that road. Okay?
Can I say one thing?
Yes, sir.
How are the fire trucks gonna do? They're gonna have to come up here, go across, turn back right there and come, and turn back right here? The fire trucks.
No, Alan, they're safety vehicles. They can use the road.
So they can turn left right there?
Right, they're coming back into their station. Yeah, because they can't turn right if they go that way. Unless they had to go down there for a wreck or something.
No, I'm talking about just to go back to the county road. But fire trucks can turn right here.
Yes, they come across, they, they're driveways right here.
Say you're gonna put them in more danger if you make it.
No, 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 they're still gonna be able to come and, cause they're, they're driveway lines out to it.
Yeah, number twelve was there.
That would pass.
Twelve.
Just need a motion on twelve.
Consideration, discussion, and possible action to place bids. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to place bids for clearing debris from culvert number one listed on the city's D R R four three three two damage inventory list. We are going to be placing out for bids to start tearing. We are going to be placing it up for bid to start clearing the debris out of the.
Detour.
Detour. Because we are at the point now where the county and the EPA and the Army Corps of Engineers is finally gonna be getting our desktop study, which is for flooding. It shows how much water that is going through that drain now. And so we're gonna start clearing it out and we're gonna see what all that takes. Because so much sewer is illegally running through that ditch. The numbers are much higher than it should be legally. It's gonna take hazmat crews, people in hazmat. They're saying that they're probably, um, they want cranes, all kinds of things. And so Missy has that from FEMA and I just need an approval to put that out for bid.
I make a motion and we put this out for bid for the possible action of clearing the debris from the culvert number. One listed in the FEMA D R four three two damage inventory list.
And I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. Consideration and possible action to approve surveillance equipment for road closures.
James. He gave out brochures.
Yes. And this is what these are specifically for.
Yes, ma'am.
This is James. He is over our computer or IT. He handles our security features, things of that nature. Pass pads to get into the new city hall, all of the cameras we've installed in city hall, and Mike, the speaker system for city hall. He handles all of those things.
So, this is more than just for road closures. These things, they're purchased by the city. Now, once all this is died out and over, these things last. They're, they're German engineered cameras. They're fully self-sufficient with solar panels with battery backup. Gives you three to four days of battery backup if you have bad weather, things like that. Now, we have problems for, in the community after all this is over, through the cities. They could move around, but spot, the spots set up, remote viewed to check on, you know, trouble areas that pops up in the community. This is an investment for the community essentially from the city has, if, if they decide to go with it, it's not just for road closures. It's something that can be moved out to where crime comes up as a problem throughout the neighborhood, anything like that.
Could you get us a breakdown on cost?
Yes.
That would be great.